Mr. Dinkler, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Jordal.
Present.
Bauton.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
We have two back up to two resolutions, eighteen and eight, with those, that material. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Just a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Item number two, we need a motion approving the minutes from November 3rd, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Item number three, are there any citizens that wish to address the council tonight on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'd just like to point out that something that you've heard that there's more homeless. Can I have this on the monitor, please?
It's on.
We've got it on ours.
Yeah, we can see it. I don't know.
They can see it up here.
Yeah, you can see it up there on the TV. See it?
Anyway, a lot of you have heard there's more homelessness in America than ever before. And anyway, I just found some information today backing that up. Otherwise, it seems to me a lot of times the city seems to have a war against poor citizens. And in Austin and in America, housing costs have never been so high. And the purchasing power of the wages has never been so low for common citizens. Anyway, it seems like in this town, Hormals and private banks promote poverty upon a lot of the common citizens of this town. And the city government seems to criminalize, almost criminalize being poor. Anyway, the city is, seems to be attacking a lot of poor people and ignoring violations by larger interests like Hormals and then robberies from private banks. But anyway, here's some pictures. See, last month, they were discussing this residence as being to be torn down. Otherwise, well, it's abandoned, I guess. But anyway, can I have this on the monitor longer, please? Anyway, this house here would be affordable housing for a lot of the homeless people, which there'd never been so many in the country before. And then the city did have this house. Can I have this on the monitor, please? The city did have this house torn down and had had a bluish gray beautiful siding that would last 50 years. And it was a sound house, and the city had it torn down this summer. But this is after they stripped siding off of it. Anyway, it reduces housing for poor people. Here's a house that was flooded out at Sutton Park and got moved to southeast, and now it's abandoned. Can I have these pictures on longer, please?
They're on there, Matt. They're there.
We can see them. Anyway, this house is now in southeast part of town. And it's, it used to be called the Gingerbread House over by Sutton Park before they moved it, but now it's got sheriff's papers on it and it's abandoned. But anyway, now getting over to the mayor's neighborhood. Anyway, can I have this on the monitor, please?
You can see it.
Anyway, in the mayor's neighborhood, I was talking to people over there. They were getting flooded out by Turtle Creek. And anyway, some of them were concerned that they might only get quote $10 for their houses. And anyways, they actually made a joke saying that they wish their house would catch fire so that they could collect full value of insurance or something.
That's really stupid. I'll tell you, Matt, it's the dumbest thing you've ever said up here, because if anybody's house had caught fire.
Pardon?
I said, "That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard you say, because if anybody's house had caught fire, they'd think a little differently." Now, you've just about hit your target on that, Matt. You've hit your target. You're up here putting house after house. I've seen some of these houses, they're gutted inside, and you're calling them valuable housing. And I, okay, you've got another 30 seconds, okay? Because you're just, you're just wearing me out on this stuff. You were all right until you started talking about my father.
Well, sometimes you let people speak for 10 minutes.
That doesn't make sense. You're not making any sense. You're babbling.
That's some of your bigotry, I guess.
No, it is.
Anyway, this here is a house in the little piece that did get, can I have this on the monitor, please?
It's on.
We can see it up here, Matt.
Well, can I have it on the monitor?
There it is.
Well, here's a house that did catch fire years ago, and it burnt a hole into the living room. And anyway, they patched it up. And anyway, it's a fine house. But anyway, I was just saying that the city doesn't seem to encourage affordable housing for a lot of people, and there's more people that are homeless than ever before. I guess that's all I'll say.
Thank you for that. But that's, I mean, you know, you haven't seen these houses. You have houses up here. You haven't been in them. You could talk to Stephen. I see him nodding his head when you're doing this.
But they can be repaired, too.
They can't be repaired. They're gutted there. There's nothing inside. People go by my house and they go, "Jeez, the mayor had a fire. There's nothing wrong." If you look, there's a hole from the basement all the way up through the roof. You know, you gotta get inside of them and see. These are, trust me, if there's any way we could salvage these houses, we would.
Well, I've done repairs on houses for years.
I know. I've seen your house, too.
(laughing).
Okay. Any other citizens that want to address the council? Yes, sir. You have, why don't you stand up, come up to the podium, give us your name and your address and your concern.
My name's David Hearn. I've lived in the city of Austin. I'm 72 years old, partially disability.
What's your address, sir?
702-36th Drive Southwest. Mountain Nelson Trailer Court out there. It used to be Nelson's. Now it's, it's the state, the, out there and stuff. So anyway, I turned around, and my neighbor turned around, and he was moving his trailer up north. And he asked me if I'd be interested in buying his garage. And it was a 24 by 28 garage. So I did some investigating. I talked to him, and I asked him about what, where my lot lines were and stuff like that. And they said they didn't know where they were. I went up and talked to Craig Horn up there, the building inspector. I talked to the other gentleman up there, too, Ron. And anyway, I told, showed him this picture here I have here of what I wanted to do with it. And he told me I had to stay 10 feet away from the street on this building, and I had to go ahead and stay 5 feet away from any electrical or water supplies out there. And so that's what I did. I took, I stayed 12 feet away from the, from the street. And I'm also 6 feet away from any water supply. And I had one garage that was there, and I wanted to move it back. And I turned around, and he said, "There's electrical box in the back. I supposed to stay 5 feet away from that," which I am now 7 feet away from it. And he told me to go ahead, and I showed him this print here and told him what I'd like to do and stuff. And he said, "Fine and dandy." He said, "I see no reason you can't go ahead with it." And he said, "Go ahead and call him." And I was getting the forms, the forms were ready to pour the cement for the garages there and stuff like that. And so I called, my boys got the forms all set up and stuff like that, and finished on a Saturday. I called their office on Monday and told them that Craig, I was supposed to call Craig, and he was supposed to come out. And he told me, when I talked to him, that I was supposed to go ahead and call him up when we got the form set up and before we poured the cement, so he could look to see it was 12 inches deep on the side, 12 inches in the center, and a 4-inch bottom in the center with the rod 2 feet apart and everything in it. And he said, "The next time I, he'd come out is when the building was up." And he told me what else I had to do to bring it up to code. So I turned around and I called on Monday about noon, and he wasn't in. I left a message there and turned around. And I've got the shuttle business. I do shuttle service for Hormals, and I also do shuttle service for the Austin Clinic. When they call in, they want me to do a blood run or take a sample of blood to Rochester, St. Paul, Fairmount, or Albert Lee, any place I go. And I take hormonal people that are coming in, the salespeople who go overseas. I take them up to cities, to the airport, and I bring foreign salespeople from overseas, bring them in down to the Holiday Inn, and they meet at the Hormals, and I take them back to the cities. I have a shuttle service. I've loaned for eight years in the city of Austin here and stuff. And when Craig told me everything was all right, he said, "Then when, when you go ahead and get the cement ready and stuff, you call me, and then we'll go on from there." So anyway, I figured that's when I was going to get the building permit on it. So, okay. So it turns around, and I get everything all set, call up there and everything. And I don't know if he came or not. By that Saturday, I was going to pour cement, so.
When was this? When was the Saturday? Because Craig's been gone for quite a while now.
Huh?
Craig's been gone.
Yeah, well, that was when he was still there.
Okay.
When I went to see him the first time, I told, he asked me when I wanted to start, and I said, "Well, probably won't be for a month." He says, "Well, when you start, you call me and let me know when you get the form set up." And turn around, and we'll get things started." And I says, "Okay." So then, then that's what happened. And then I had a mover move my garage over, and it turned around, and I was, I was out in the garage one day and turned around, and this young gentleman from the, from the building inspe, and he was a building inspector, which I didn't know. I didn't know Craig retired and stuff. And he came out there, and he came right up to me and to my face on my own property. And he says, the first thing he says to me, "I'm going to make you tear your garage down." And I says, "Excuse me?" I says, "I think you better talk to Craig. I'm dealing with Craig." And he says, "Well, Craig isn't there no more. He retired, and I'm the new building inspector, and I'm going to make you tear your garage down." And he says, "I'm going to bring my boss out." On Monday, this was on Friday, about noon, and Monday, he was going to bring his boss out. And I says, "I got a business." I says, "Tell me, please, tell me what time you're going to come out, so I'll be here."
How long ago was this?
Oh, that was, I don't know, three months ago. So it was quite a while ago, anyway. Turned around, and so he told me not to do any more building on it. So I did not do any more building on it. Then Monday came, I was sitting in the chair outside the garage, and turned around, and they didn't come at 9:00. They didn't come at 9:30, 10 o'clock. He finally came in, driving around the back way, coming in the back way. And I, he got out of the truck, and I says, "Where's your boss?" He says, "Well, he can't make it today." And I thought, "Well, you know, that kid come up to me at first, and he says, 'I'm going to make you tear your building down.'" I thought, "That's not a businessman, way to do things, you know? Run right up to somebody and threaten him right away like that." So anyway, turned around and, and he said, "Well..." And then I got a letter from the city to come out for a meeting. So that was about a month and a half later. So I was, and when he come out Monday, we talked, talked, and he said, I says, "Well", he says, "You got a bobcat sitting there." I says, "Yeah, it belongs to my son." I said, "We used it to dig out the dirt and pour the sand in there, get the forms ready and everything else for it." And I said, he said, he was nice as heck that day, and turned around, and he, I says, "What do I got to do to bring my garage up to code?" And he says, "Well, you got to put hurricane clips on, and halfway from the peak of the rafter down to the end of the rafter, you got to run a one-bike horizontally across there." So I said, "Okay." And he never said anything or about not building it. So I figured it was okay to go ahead, so I built it. And I turned around, and then I get a letter from Holly over here with a bit, few different things on here. I met with her and Ron and stuff, and they said, and she personally came out, and Ron says, "Oh, how come you're building on this?" And I says, "Well, I wasn't, I said, 'Your boy come out on Friday. He told me not to, so I quit.' And when he come out Monday, he never even said nothing about not building it and stuff like that, so I thought it was okay to do it." I didn't get into it because I was busy on my business. I run for Hormals all over. I've run, run down to Missouri and all over for Hormals and stuff.
Okay.
So anyway, turned around, and I went up there and talked to these people here, and they, they come up now, and they sent me a letter here that I got to be 20 feet between manufactured homes. I moved a garage. I didn't move a home, so I don't understand what that is. And in the paper here, they say I, I'm 3 feet away from a water supply. I'm all, I'm over 6 feet away from a water supply, so I don't know where they're getting their measurements here. Then they said, said that I had to have a permit to move the garage across the street, which I was not informed about any of this stuff. So, and he told me that I turned around, and I had to have a license board to allow it, anything over 14 feet. And then I told a young man, I said, he was a building inspector then. His name is Derek. And anyway, turned around, and he said, "You have to have a permitted mobile over the door of it." And I said, "If it's over 14 feet?" And I says, "It's only 139." And I says, "I got it setting on a 3 1/2 inch code, so it's only maybe 13 5 1/2." Well, anyway, my son happens to know Steve, Steve came here and stuff, and he, and he said to come over and talk to him about it and tell him my situation, and maybe you people could help me out on this deal here. And they said they were going to go ahead and talk to Craig, and they were going to also go ahead, and they sent this letter to me, and they also sent it to the new owner of the trailer court there. And I have not heard a word from the trailer court at all. And I was just talking to Holly now, and she said they talked to him, and I don't know what's happened on the deal.
Holly, can you fill us in on what's going on? How can we help this gentleman?
I've got over $15,000 in the cement and the garage and everything in it. And I just, and they said if I didn't bring it up to what they recommended here, I'd have to dismantle it, tear it down.
Let's see where we're at.
When I came on, the, this issue was ongoing, as he described. I did talk to Mr. Hoyam. Mr. Hoyam did not indicate that he had okayed going ahead without any permits. That permits would have been required. And then at that time, we would have been reviewing what, what was required for placement of an additional structure onto that property. He had also indicated to me that although there is not currently a trailer located adjacent to this property, there are hookups for a trailer that are much too close to the current structures, the accessory structures, the garages.
Because there will be a trailer, probably, sometimes.
There could be. So another thing that could be done is potentially that those hookups could be moved, you know, into the, the next lot further in so that it would meet the requirements for the setback between trailers. But that hasn't been done. The other issue is that, and I'm looking at mostly the zoning issues, there are some building structural issues as well with inspection of the cement pouring and some of the other additions, because I think there were two garages that were attached to each other, or?
They were not attached. That's one thing Craig said. You cannot have one building over 38 feet long. He said you can have a foot between the garages, and I have 8 feet between the garages.
Holly, is this something that we can work with him on?
Yes, we can work with him on this. I ask.
We're not going to fix this at the meeting tonight. Why don't you make, come in and see Holly this week sometime, and we'll work it out. And I'll make sure Holly reports to me. You can call me if you want, if you're, you know, if you have issues. You know, just talk to Holly or whatever, and you can call me, and we'll work this out with you. You may have to get the permits and stuff, but we don't want to see you have to tear your.
I'm more than willing to pay a fine. I'm more than willing to buy the permits and stuff, which I was under the understanding when Craig said to go ahead and do the forms for the cement work, that we'd get things started, and I figured that was it.
Well, let's, but you're going to have to work with us on this.
Well, yeah, that's why I came here, and I was hoping that we could work something out here.
It sounds like there's just some miscommunication.
Yeah, right, correct.
You know, a lot of times on permits, I mean, I built a deck one time. It was like, "Hey, you got to have a permit." You know, you forget, I mean, the city doesn't tell you ahead of time.
Right, right.
You're just supposed to, sometimes you're expected to know this stuff, and we don't always know that. But why don't you contact Holly next week, and she'll work with you on this, and we don't want to have to see you tear this stuff down. But there's stuff that has to be done, apparently, and I'm not guaranteeing anything.
No.
Let's work with her and see if we can't get this.
One thing Ron said, too, at the, at the meeting, that between Holly and I, he said, they said, "Well, Ron made a mistake." And I thought, "If Ron made a mistake, it's a $15,000 mistake that I got to tear my garage down?"
No, we'll try to work around that. And Holly, I guarantee that.
I appreciate it. I appreciate you trying to get this straightened out for me, because I do not want to tear it down.
You know what? Everybody likes working with Holly. She's kind of new at this, but she's really good, and she's a perfect person.
Well, I hope Holly and I can work together.
We won't have any misunderstandings with Holly. Holly, Holly, you'll be happy, I hope. But I mean, you may, we'll see. But Holly, keep me appraised to this and let us know how this works out, and we'll try and work with you so you don't have to tear this stuff down.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would say that we have been able to speak together very, very well. That's not really been an issue. But I would say there's probably some difference in interpretation of obviously what's been happening.
I see the gentleman is frustrated, and we all get frustrated once in a while, I guess, but we'll work with you, and we'll, we'll try and work this out, okay?
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to address the council? Yes, sir, come on up here. Give us your name and your address, and then tell us your concern.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ladies and gentlemen, the City Council.
Don't be nervous. You look like you're a little nervous.
I'm not prepared. I just found out there was a.
That's okay. Just, you're neighbors. Just talk to us like you talk to your neighbor.
I live at 202 Third Street in Lyle, but the issue in question is in Austin. On or about October 8th, two pit bulls were taken into the pound for.
Your pit bulls?
No, sir.
Okay.
But I, I have taken care of these dogs, and I know the dogs.
Mm-hmm.
And the dogs in question are not, they're not dog fighters, or were they trained to be. And supposedly, they're going to be classified as dangerous dogs and euthanized.
I have no idea what you're talking about. We'd have to, I'm sure you're probably right, but we haven't been brought up to speed on this issue.
Your Honor, that isn't the matter that's before the council this evening. It's concerning another dog.
There is a dangerous dog.
Number seven on the agenda?
No, but it's not that one.
Yeah, it won't be your dog that we're talking about today. Do you know, did you come here because there's something on the agenda?
Captain McKeegan at the police force, at the police department, I talked to him about it, and he told me to come to the council.
Your Honor, if in fact, there's a designation of certain dogs as dangerous, and there is an order out by the animal control officer that it be destroyed, the owner of that dog will have an opportunity to appeal that determination, and a hearing will be held for the council in the future. At this time, this is inappropriate because it's not a matter before. It's not, it hasn't been appealed, and therefore, there's no reason to, to go any further with his comments. He will have an opportunity at that hearing to testify if he wants.
What they're saying is you have to go, there'll be procedures, but, and you were told to come here, but that was, you shouldn't, I mean, we're not discussing that today, and we will be discussing it. I see Ernesto's back there. Has he worked with this? Can you make sure that he's brought up to speed, and we contact him whenever the proper procedures take place, Ernie?
See, Your Honor, the, the owner of the dogs is, is in jail right now. He's in custody, so he's unable to, to be here.
Will he be out by the time there's a hearing? Or is he going, is this a long-term thing?
I don't know.
Mr. Holverstein, can he speak in lieu of the owner if he's the caretaker for the animals?
It has to be made by the owner of the animals.
He can do that from jail, though.
And, Your Honor, and if the owner wants to call, this gentleman is a witness. He has that opportunity to do so.
But he can do that from jail. He just needs to file a proper appeal, and the jail will help him with that. We'll send to that, Ernesto, would we see to that, that he gets the help he needs?
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me take your time.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move forward then. Item number, we have no words of recommendation. We need a motion for number five, the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Item number six, review final plat for Cedar Ridge number two. Holly, you're up again.
Yes, there has been some, there has been a development on that. The individual who had initially petitioned, Mr. Olson, he has decided to review the plat and develop a few more of the lots, so he would withdraw his application at this time.
Okay.
And then reapply when he has a new plat developed.
Okay. That was the gentleman that was here at the last meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So we just need, do we need the resolutions then, Mr. Holverstein, or do we just table this, or what?
It's not tabled. It will be a new application for a new plat. He's just withdrawn his petition, so no action is necessary, Your Honor.
Okay. Then we'll move on to number seven, a public hearing for a dangerous dog appeal filed by Grace Gadoo. Mr. Holverstein.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor has indicated, the proceedings tonight involve an appeal from a determination by the animal control officer that a certain dog owned by Grace J. Gadoo, identified as Mia, is a dangerous animal under the city ordinances, and further that the animal control officer has entered an order for its destruction. This arises out of an incident occurring October 13, 2014, wherein a nine-month-old child was bitten by the subject dog. As far as the procedure goes, for the convenience of the council, I have prepared the applicable sections of the ordinance with regard to dangerous animals. If the mayor and the council agree, I would suggest that the following procedure be undertaken in this hearing. First of all, the city will call its witnesses and introduce its evidence. As any document that's introduced can be examined by the appellant, Grace Gadoo. Further, the appellant would have the opportunity to cross-examine any witnesses provided by the city. Likewise, at the conclusion of the city's main presentation, the appellant, Grace Gadoo, would have the opportunity to testify herself and present any other witnesses or evidence she so desires to be heard and presented and reviewed by the city council. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city council will have one of three choices to make. Number one, find that the dog Mia is a dangerous animal and that the dog should be destroyed. Or number two, find that the dog Mia is a dangerous animal, but the dog should not be destroyed, upon the condition that the owner meet all of the, all or some of the requirements of subdivision 21A of the ordinance. I think you're familiar with that. That requires certain types of restraint and so forth, chips, insurance. Or number three, find that the dog Mia is not a dangerous animal. If that procedure is okay with the city council, I'm ready to proceed.
Counsel, any problems? Go ahead and proceed.
I would call Community Service Officer Ernesto Cantu, and could he come up to the podium? Ernesto, I'm showing you the police report that was developed with regard to this incident that occurred October 13, 2014, involving the dog Mia owned by the appellant Grace Gadoo. Is that a correct copy of that police report?
Yes.
Counsel and Mayor, we would ask that this police report be made part of the record in this matter. And we'd also provide the council the copy of the same. Officer Cantu, what's your employment with the city of Austin?
I work as a community service officer for the Austin Police Department.
And as part of those duties, are you assigned certain animal control duties with the city?
Correct.
Okay. On October 13, 2014, were you contacted and asked to go to the Austin Albert Lee Mail Clinic Hospital Facility here in Austin, Minnesota?
Correct.
And who contacted? The police department.
I believe that it was the hospital who called the Austin Police Department.
And that was on the basis that a child presented, the parent presented a child with certain injuries resulting from a dog bite?
Yes.
Okay. Upon reaching the hospital, did you talk with the owner of the dog?
Yes.
And did she identify the little child with the dog bites as her daughter?
Yes.
And that daughter's name is Camilla Rose Birdsong?
Yes.
With the date of birth of January 17, 2014, making her approximately nine months old at the time of the attack?
Yes.
Did Ms. Gadoo tell you what had happened with regard to the attack of the dog upon her daughter?
Yes, she did. But she wasn't present when it happened, when this thing happened.
Well, what did she say? How did she learn that her daughter, her daughter had been attacked by the dog?
She, I was, she told me that she heard like, she heard over here like a weird bark. So she went to check on the kitchen, and she noticed her little girl bit in from the face.
Okay, she was in another room when she heard the noise?
Correct.
And the child was located in the kitchen?
Correct.
What did she tell you she observed when she got into the kitchen?
She saw the baby with blood on the, on the, on her face and took her to the emergency room.
Okay. And where was the dog? Did she indicate?
She indicated it was also in the kitchen.
Okay. She indicated that she heard weird noise. Did she hear any barking? Did she indicate to you?
It was barking. That's what she heard, a weird, a weird barking.
Did she indicate to you that she'd heard the baby crying?
Yes.
And at the time that she entered the kitchen, the baby was on the floor with the blood on her face?
Correct.
And she indicated then that she proceeded to take the child to the hospital for medical attention? The first time you talked to the owner of the dog, Ms. Gadoo, you had not been in the house, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the next time you visited with Ms. Gadoo was when you served upon. And the next time you visited with Ms. Gadoo was when you served upon her the notice of a dangerous dog, or determining, your determination that the dog was a dangerous animal under ordinances, in that the animal has caused bodily injury or disfigurement to a person on public or private property, and that the animal engaged and attacked upon a person under circumstances which indicate danger to personal safety. And further, you indicated on that notice that it was your determination that the animal should be destroyed, is that correct?
Correct.
And you served that notice upon Ms. Gadoo on October 13, 2014, and she did acknowledge receipt of that notice at that time?
Correct.
Did you have any further conversation with her when you served this notice upon her?
No, not really.
Okay. Did you inspect the house at all, or go?
No.
Okay. Officer Cantu, is this the, a copy of the notice that was served upon Ms. Gadoo?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, Your Honor, we'd like to make this part of the record in this proceeding. Now, while at the hospital, did you have an opportunity to see little Camilla?
Yes.
And did you take pictures of her when you were there?
I took one picture.
One picture, okay. And that was through your phone?
Correct.
And you had those pictures developed through the computer system so that prints could be made of those pictures?
I sent it to Captain McKeegan, and then he does what he did.
Okay, so he used the technology available to the police department to actually develop pictures or photographs of the child?
Yes.
And are the, one, these are the same pictures, one is just enlarged a little bit?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And what do they show on the child?
They saw bite marks on her face, and there is a bruise around her nose.
Okay. So you feel that these pictures are accurate in that they depict four marks, at least a minimum of four marks, or puncture wounds on the child's face?
Correct.
And while the picture may not be that clear, you recall that she had bruising on her face as well?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Steem and members of the council, we would like you, we were going to have those entered as evidence in this proceeding, and would like you to review those pictures. Did Ms. Gadoo indicate what treatment the child received at the hospital, or were you ever advised of that?
No, I left the hospital.
Okay.
I was not told what happened after that.
I've been remiss in identifying Ms. Gadoo, is she present today? Right there, okay. You will have an opportunity to look at these pictures if you so desire, okay. Again, I would ask that these pictures be made as part of the record of these proceedings. Officer, in your professional opinion, taking into consideration your training and experience as an animal control officer, do you believe this dog to be dangerous by reason of the fact that it attacked a nine-month-old baby?
Yes.
And after observing the wounds inflicted by the dog upon this baby, do you feel that it would be appropriate that this dog would be destroyed in order to protect any other children or persons that may come in contact with this dog?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions unless the council has any questions of Officer Cantu.
I guess, is this the only report, were there previous reports concerning the start, or was this the first?
I don't believe so.
Okay. It appears to me that the dog could have been approached by the child, and the child attacked the dog, you never know.
Yeah, that we don't know, because they were in the kitchen, and the mom didn't see what happened, didn't see what happened, so.
Grace owned the dog, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The dog bit the child, was the child Grace's child?
Yes, it's Grace's daughter.
What was the dog's disposition when you were there, was it aggressive, or was it?
No. No, when they, when she went to the, when she went to the pound, it was, it was just timid.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are the wishes of the family?
We're gonna have.
Yeah, they'll have an opportunity.
First of all, Ms. Gadoo, do you have any questions of Officer Cantu at this time? Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, just fine. No.
Well, we want to be fair, the dog's been in the pound, have you observed any aggressive?
He's still, she's timid, though, she's, you know, yeah, she's a very timid.
Okay, now, just a minute, just a minute, please.
We're gonna call witnesses, I mean, anybody who wants to speak will have the opportunity.
Again, I'm trying to be fair here. I'm saying that as the dog's been in the dog pound, has the dog exhibited any aggressive behavior against its caretakers?
It's just timid. But I, timid, you know, like, she's scared, yeah.
Okay, but she hasn't barked, or jumped, or lunged, or done anything like that?
Yes.
Okay. These are the pictures. Okay, have you seen those, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Subsequently, Ms. Gadoo did file an appeal, and it's memorialized by a letter addressed to whom it may concern, indicating her appeal and her thoughts with regard to this matter. It's pursuant to a letter dated October 16, 2014. We'll make that part of the record. Your Honor and members of the council, that is, at this time, the end of the evidence we had produced at this hearing, and I would suggest that now at this time, Ms. Gadoo have the opportunity to address the council or present any evidence she wants or any witnesses she so desires.
Thank you, Ernesto.
Yeah. And if.
Ms. Gadoo, you want to step up to the podium?
Hi.
Hi. And you're great.
Yes, I'm Grace Gadoo.
And your address?
305 27th Street, Southwest, here in Austin.
Okay, and you're the owner of the dog?
Yes.
Okay, how long have you had this dog?
A little over a year. I've known her basically her whole life, she's three now. I have her previous owner here, actually, and her support team.
Is she neutered? Is she spayed or neutered, whatever?
Yeah, she's fixed, she's fixed, and she's a good dog.
So why don't you tell us your version?
That day, the day that the incident happened or whatever, I had just left the hospital with her because she had a cold or whatever, so we were there, and.
Your daughter?
Yep.
Okay.
So we had just gotten home, and I was just getting everything situated, and my dog was hungry, and I was taking stuff out of the fridge, and there was a pan of, like, soup that I had made the night before, so I just gave it to the dog, not thinking that the baby would interfere with her or anything, because, like, when we give me a food, we can take it from her, and she's never nipped or bit at any of us or anything, but I guess just this particular time, the baby must have got too close to her, and she reacted, and I think that that's my fault for giving her human food. I don't know, but I think that's what caused this whole thing. I'm not sure. And then she bit at the baby, the baby was fine, we took her to the hospital, she didn't need stitches or anything, they said all the wounds were superficial, some ointment on them, and then like a week and a half later, they were pretty much healed, so.
So, you originally, you said that you didn't want the dog, now you've changed your mind, obviously.
I have somebody, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to have her back. If I could have her back, I'd love to take her back, I don't know if I could.
That's what we're determining here tonight.
If I'd be completely comfortable sitting with it, but I do have somebody who is more than willing to take her. They live in the country, they don't have any smaller children, so.
Okay, now, have you reviewed, like, if we declared this a dangerous dog, but put conditions on it for insurance and stuff?
We'd have to get insurance and put a chip in her and stuff, and we know, we already know about all the conditions, all the stuff.
And they'd be willing to get that insurance, because that's rather expensive.
We'd work together and make sure that it happens, she's a good dog, I don't feel that she deserves to die for what she did. I think that if she was trying to hurt my child, my child would have at least had to have had stitches. So I believe that if she was trying to hurt her, my daughter would have, she'd be worse off than what she was.
Well, I think, you know, the council takes very seriously, I mean, a lot of us are dog lovers, I have dogs, you know, we don't, we really don't like to put a dog down unless.
And I just don't think, like, if she, if my daughter would have had to have stitches or something, that might have changed the whole situation, but because of the wounds being so superficial, you know, and they didn't really need any kind of medical attention, and it hasn't affected how my daughter is, and you heard Ernesto say that she's not really that aggressive from what he's experienced from her, so I just don't feel, I believe she deserves a second.
Who are the people that are talking about taking the dog? Could you come up here and tell us, you know, what kind of conditions you live at, and where you'd have the dog?
Your Honor, before, let's take one thing at a time.
Okay.
Could I?
No, go ahead.
With your, with your permission, I would like to, are you done with your testimony, or?
Yeah, I really don't.
Okay. It's true to say, though, that your conversation with Ernesto was accurate in that you were not present in the kitchen when the dog bit your daughter, is that correct?
That is correct, and I feel.
And so, any comments about, or suppositions on your behalf that the dog bit your daughter because she got too close to the dog's food is just pure speculation on your part, isn't that correct?
I mean, I guess, because I gave her the food when I left the area.
But you're guessing on that, you don't know that to be the case?
No, because I didn't see it happen.
Okay, that's.
Okay. So, you've never seen this kind of behavior before?
No.
And you've had the dog a year, you said?
Yeah, and then, this is the person who's had her for the other two years of her life, and hasn't seen anything like that from her.
Who had her before?
Yeah, I had her on other animals, bunnies, little kids used to ride on her, like a horse play. I have pictures in my phone, I can show you with her, with little kids.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions?
I have a couple more questions, Your Honor. It's accurate to say when you talked to Officer Cantu, when he served you the documents, that you said that you did not want to have the dog back in your house?
No, because it was right after it happened, and I was still.
But that's what you said, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you still have a fear that this dog could do harm to your child because you're willing to take this dog, and you're at least requesting that you have the ability and the opportunity to give the dog to someone else?
Not a fear, if I can have her back, I will, I'll take her back. But if I can't have her back, I'd rather her go with somebody else than her be put down.
So.
If I can have her, I'll take her.
You would have, you would have no fear that this dog could bite your little girl again?
No.
Okay.
Counsel? What kind of conditions can we put on this, Mr. Hoveston?
Okay, if the council would turn to page, I believe it's 29 of the packet that I gave.
What would you recommend, I guess, if we weren't to put the dog down?
Well, it's my recommendation the dog be destroyed. But it's, you have asked and inquired, and one of the choices of the council is under subdivision 21 of section 10.10 of the Austin City Code, it says, "If the city council does not order the destruction of an animal that has been declared dangerous, the council may, as an alternative, order any or all of the following. One, that the owner provide and maintain a proper enclosure for the dangerous animal, as specified in subdivision 20 above. Two, post the front and rear of the premises with clearly visible warning signs, including a warning symbol to inform children that there's a dangerous animal on the property, as specified in Minnesota Statute 34751. Three, provide and show proof annually of public liability insurance in the minimum amount of $300,000. Four, if the animal is a dog and is outside the proper enclosure, the dog must be muzzled and restrained by a substantial chain or leash, not to exceed six feet in length, and under the physical restraint of a person 16 years of age or older. The muzzle must be of a design as to prevent the dog from biting any person or animal, but will not cause injury, the dog interfere with its respiration." In other words, the dog has to be in an enclosure, and if the dog is out of the enclosure, it must be muzzled and leashed.
What guarantees do we have if this dog goes to a person that lives outside the city, can we enforce this?
Well, the animal control officer shall immediately seize any dangerous animal if the owner does not meet each of the requirements. So, that is problematic, but I believe that there would be jurisdiction
Okay.
for the city to enforce this order.
Okay.
Going on, Your Honor, it has to be, the animal must, if the dog must have an easily identifiable standardized tag identifying the dog as dangerous affixed to its collar. Number six, the animal deemed dangerous by the animal control officer shall be registered with the county in which the city is located within 14 days after the date the animal is so deemed. So that would take the case if the dog is still within the county. And if the animal is a dog, the dog must be licensed and up to date on rabies vaccinations. So those are the requirements, as I said, some or all of them can be designated by the city council in the event they find this dog to be a dangerous animal, in lieu of destruction.
Okay. Counsel? I'm suggesting that maybe subdivision 21, item 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 would be a reasonable solution to this concern. 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7. We would not have the owner provide and maintain a proper enclosure for the dangerous animal, as specified in subdivision 20, that would not be included. Or she could give the dog to the individual who lives outside the city. But then the individual would be required to fulfill these requirements, isn't that so, Mr. Hoveston?
Yes, because you recall, if the dog is found to be a dangerous animal under our ordinance by reason of what transpired with the biting of the child, then whether it's in the city or outside of the city, the owner will have to cause, or the new owner will have to cause this animal to meet the requirements as set forth in our ordinance.
Who's the person that's talking about, would you want to come up here, give us your name and where you live?
My name is Kelly Janning, I live at 53809 184th Streets.
Where's that at?
It's out towards Yuland's Quarry, or out on 4th Street Southeast, straight out of town.
Okay.
It's on a farm, I have cows, I have one other dog, he is a terrier, but he's probably about knee-high, he gets along with dogs really well, from what I've been told by the previous owner, so does she.
Do you have kids?
I have, two children, but they are 13 and 14, so they're not young. I believe that this dog would be fine at my house. My house is a three-bedroom house, she would be pretty much a house dog, she wouldn't be outside much. They would be on leashes, my dogs are always on leashes.
Are you familiar with the dog?
Not really, no, but I'm willing to take her.
Okay.
I was looking for another dog anyway because of some fears I have of someone that was just released from jail, I don't know if you've seen the article or seen me on TV, but anyways, I, I just think that even another dog would be good for me right now.
And you're willing to fulfill the requirements that the officer?
Yep, I am, I think that the other two people here, the previous owner and the owner now, would help me fulfill those requirements with anything that needs to be done. My dog is all up to date on shots, I would make sure this one would be. Keeping insurance on her, what kind of insurance, whatever you need.
Insurance can be expensive, $300,000.
Yeah, I know.
You've checked on it already?
I haven't checked too much on it, no, but is this like bull insurance, or is this like, just regular?
There's no specific dog insurance, it's liability insurance.
It's what?
Liability insurance.
Like homeowner's insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be liability insurance through your homeowner.
Okay, well, my parents own the farm, I mean, so, and they're willing to let me have this dog, and, I mean, they're Fred and Deloitte Schmidt.
They're gonna have to have that insurance for you to come up, you're gonna have to have it to show proof of that insurance to pick it up.
Yes, I understand that, but, I mean, they own the farm, and, you know, they understand that I want this dog, they're comfortable with it, they know I'm here tonight, they know the whole circumstances around what's going on. So I've not lied to them about anything or told them anything that's not true, so. And if they feel it's okay, then I guess they don't feel that this dog is dangerous, so, they're pretty good about that.
I really, really don't like going against Ernesto's recommendations, but I've seen dogs that get startled, you know, and I've seen.
But even with Ernesto saying that the dog was timid when he took her, and that she's been timid the whole time, that he's. she's been timid the whole time, that he's, he's been around her and in the pound, I don't know if a dangerous dog would act that way. I know dangerous dogs. I've seen them. And they don't act like that.
I'm not an expert on dangerous dogs, and I've been around them my whole life. And, you know, obviously, we don't want to put it back in a situation where a young girl could be injured.
I don't have any small children.
Well, let's see what happens. Roger, you have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Well, you did already. Or you can't, go ahead and restate your motion.
That it's declared a potentially dangerous dog, because we don't know if it's declared a danger, but declared a potentially dangerous dog, and that we adhere to the rules to item 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, under subdivision 21.
Can we even declare it potentially, or?
Well, I live on a dead-end road. I'm the only house on the end of my road. So I mean, I'm pretty secluded where I'm at.
Potentially is like halfway, you know. It's not, you know, two potentially is equally dangerous, John, is that right, or a dog, isn't that right, Brian? If it gets the same, another report, no matter what it is.
David.
Oh, David?
Because if we do potentially, then I don't think any of those things...
If it's a dangerous dog, there are no further requirements. It just means it's got a first free bite, and that if it bites someone else, or engages in the conduct again, then it, that's prima facie evidence that it's a dangerous animal.
I think that's...
I don't feel, and I'm representing the city here...
I know.
...that this fits within the definition of a potentially dangerous dog. This dog has attacked a nine-month-old child who's crawling on the floor. If this, if this dog had attacked a little child, a neighbor child, what would the, what would the attitude of the council be at that point in time? What if this dog was out for a walk and attacked a little toddler in someone's front yard? We have declared dogs to be dangerous that have bitten and killed other dogs. The fact that this dog did not cause such injury to create permanent disfigurement is a matter of coincidence and circumstance. The dog, in fact, attacked a nine-month-old child. So I don't think the designation of the dog as potentially dangerous is merited by the facts or the evidence.
Okay.
I would agree with that. I'm leaning towards destruction of the animal. I don't take that very lightly. I own two dogs, and I, but if either of them harmed my child, I would put my dog down. I, there's just no, I just can't. I wouldn't, I couldn't live with that. The possibility that it could have done more, or that it could do something again, I can't. And I don't want, I see the picture of that little girl, and if that was my little boy, or a friend or family, I could not live with myself if I allowed that dog to continue living with the potential to possibly do that to somebody else.
I'm just trying to explore the possibilities. I mean, I'm, you know, whatever council decides is, is fine. Okay, we have a motion. Tom, can you read that motion back?
Motion by Councilmember Bowden to label the dog as a potentially dangerous dog. And with Overston's discussion, items 2 through 7 are not needed, because a potentially dangerous dog does not have those requirements. So, in essence, Councilmember Bowden's motion is to just declare the dog a potentially dangerous dog. Is that correct?
Well, let me rephrase that, then. Put it a dangerous dog, and with items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
I think, yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Bowden to classify the dog as a dangerous dog, with requirements of 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, as a requirement to get the animal back.
Okay. Is there a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Tom?
Motion by Councilmember Bowden, seconded by Councilmember Enright, to declare the dog a dangerous dog, and requirements of 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 be needed in order to get the dog back. So an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Jordal?
Nay.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Nay.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-2, Your Honor.
Okay, you get your dog, or you're gonna have to fulfill those requirements with Ernesto, and I think you should consider yourself fortunate, because this doesn't happen very often. We really take it serious when the police department makes these recommendations.
Your Honor, procedurally, I, I, we should then have a motion made to have the city direct the city attorney to prepare findings of fact and an order. First of all, the findings of fact, declaring the dog to be a, a dangerous dog, outlining the reasons why. And number two, that the order be given that they comply with these conditions. And so, at the next council meeting, as we've done before, I will, will have prepared those, and the council then can vote on that resolution, and, and the mayor can, and the quarter can sign the order.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Just, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next order of business?
Thank you.
Okay. Sure don't want to see that dog back in here. All right, let's move on. Where are we at? What item? Number eight, public hearing for the review of the downtown master plan.
The downtown master plan was developed over a five-month period and included a June 23 kickoff meeting with community leaders and volunteers, a July 14 tour of the downtown Austin with residents, business owners, and organizations. They called this their reconnaissance visit. On August 27, there was a presentation of the straw man plan to downtown merchants, stakeholders, and the community in general. On October 8, there was a draft plan presented to the public, and on October 20, the plan was, the current plan was presented to city council at a work session. The plan was developed to provide a framework for decision-making for the long-term desired outcomes in downtown Austin. And the plan provided seven guiding principles, identification of downtown influence areas, the greater downtown, identifying five policy areas, explored the transportation in downtown in detail, looked at the downtown core area and key activity corridors, including Main Street and 4th Avenue. It then went on to detail some strategies for implementing the downtown plan, which include establishing a group to oversee broad implementation of the plan, revise and development, revised development regulations, continue financial assistance programs, create specific redevelopment plans, incorporate transportation and infrastructure improvements into the capital improvement plan, create green infrastructure standards for the greater downtown and downtown core area, consider the development of a heritage preservation commission, and consider sustainable building design in public infrastructure standards. And then these, there were specific areas of interest that were identified often at the community meetings that are addressed in the plan, and those were the downtown parking and need for, possible need for a ramp, the pedestrian facilities and alternate modes of transportation, specifically bicycles, the downtown organizational strategy, which would be the developing a group to kind of foster the develop, or the implementation of the plan, redesign and redefine of the use of the 4th Avenue Northeast corridor, and urban forestry and green infrastructure and sustainability. The final plan is available on the Austin city website. It's approximately, it's over 80 pages. It's a very detailed plan. It was developed through the input of a number of people. There is an acknowledgements page that acknowledges the mayor, the city council, the planning commission, many of the organizations in the city of Austin, including Vision 2020, the Development Corporation of Boston, the Main Street Project, Chamber of Commerce, Port Authority, and others, as well as city staff. The consultant team was CR Planning, along with SEH Incorporated. They gave a special thanks to the downtown businesses that offered suggestions and participated in the public meetings. The Vision 2020 committee volunteers who reviewed drafts and provided background information, and then, of course, the residents of the city of Austin who participated in the public meetings and hearings. And then on, in adopting the downtown master plan, we had a planning commission meeting on November 13, 2014, at which time a motion was passed 5 to 0 recommending approval of the downtown master plan to the council, which is why we are here tonight. The downtown master plan is here for the review and adoption of the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Counsel, this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience wishes to address this issue, this would be the time, public hearing. Okay, nobody? Then we need a motion or a resolution on this?
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. We now move to petitions and requests. Number nine is a motion setting a public hearing for December 15, 2014, on the adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan. We need a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 10 is a resolution granting 2015 off-sale liquor licenses, club on-sale licenses, and wine on-sale licenses.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a resolution accepting results of the 2014 general election. Anybody want to recount on Judy's history? Okay, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is a resolution granting a 3-2 beer on-sale liquor license to Maya Restaurant LLC. Anybody?
So moved.
Need a resolution? Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution approving grant agreement number four to the North Main Street flood, flood, excuse me, flood project. Mr. Lang?
Uh, Mr. Dankert and myself have been working with our representative from the DNR on this grant agreement. This would be an extension to our current North Main Grant Agreement, and it would also provide some additional funding for projects going on along the North Main Flood Control Project, in the amount of an additional $700,000. This is a 50-50 matching grant, and it would go toward projects that we are planning, finish up of the construction on phase, phases 3 through 7. It would go toward design services for Phase 1, and design services for Lions Park, a combination of those things. Our current agreement expires on December 31 of 2014, and this would be a one-year extension to that, and we would recommend awarding the grant amendment.
Counsel, anything? If there is not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a resolution approving grant agreement number one to the Dobbin's Creek Flood Project. Mr. Lang?
We previously received a $450,000 grant for work along Dobbin's Creek. It included some property acquisitions and also some infrastructure projects. We're currently in the process of working on those, making some offers. We have had some people turn us down, but we are continuing to, to work on our list of acquisition, along with those infrastructure projects. And the current grant expires again on December 31 of 2014, and this will just be a one-year extension to that grant. There's no additional monies, just a one-year extension. We'd recommend approving this.
Counsel, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 15 is a resolution approving grant agreement number two to Turtle Creek Flood Project. Mr. Lang?
We currently have a $1,861,700 grant for, it's a 50-50 matching grant for work along Turtle Creek. Again, it identifies acquisition in infrastructure projects that we're currently working on, and this request, requested amendment here today, is to extend it to, extend our current grant, which expires on December 31 of 2014, two years. So this would be a two-year extension for this grant, and we would recommend approval.
Anything, Counsel? If not, let's have a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Resolution 16 is approval, approving the purchase of 109 16th Avenue Southwest. Mr. Lang?
At a previous work session back in September, we discussed the possibility of acquiring a home or multiple homes, if they become available along 16th Avenue Southwest, for future planning for the wastewater treatment plant. In going through that process, we have a willing seller. We have appraised the home at $23,900, and we would recommend a purchase of that home actually for $23,650. That is less the $250 appraisal, which the city has already paid. Funds for this would come out of our wastewater treatment plant domestic budget. There would be additional funds required for abatement and demolition of the home, but we would recommend approval of, for acquiring the home at 109 16th Avenue Southwest.
Counsel, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a resolution approving survey services for North Main Street Flood Control Project Phase 1, and Lions Park Flood Control Project. Mr. Lang?
Counsel, we previously approved contracts with SEH for design services for these two projects, and we have found in the past that we can get better competitive bids by using local firms to do the actual survey. So that is what I'm bringing forward to you today is a price from Jones Hogan Smith out of Albert Lee, to complete the necessary topo survey work and data collection in the amount of $18,000 for these two projects.
Counsel, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
And for our final item of the evening, 18 is resolution approving, approval of a memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters. Mr. Dankert?
Uh, the previous closed work session, council discussed the attached memo of understanding, which clarifies how payout is made regarding sick leave and individuals that were hired before 2008, and the current collective bargaining agreement we are under. That memo of understanding outlines the payment to retiree Brian Lovick to be a lump sum of $5,000, and also would clarify the language in the IAFF contract, such that the language is much more clear for future payouts of individuals that retire from the city of Austin. It was a recommended approval at the closed work session.
Council, any questions, comments? We need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Council member Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero, your honor.
Thank you. We now come to the reports and recommendation phase of our meeting. We'll start with Jeremy this evening.
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing, your honor.
Shannon.
Nothing, your honor.
Jeff.
Well, I have a couple things, your honor. We did have a Park and Rec Board meeting on November 5th. At that, we met with a representative from the Vision 2020 Waterways Committee, and we discussed ways that we can work together on a variety of projects. We approved the request from the Chamber of Commerce for their Christmas in the City event, and we also discussed the possibility of the Bruins soliciting beer or liquor advertisement signs in Riverside Arena, and that is under further review. That's all from that. I also have, it's been almost a year since we ended our relationship with former city administrator Dr. Jim Herm.